You're a little bit in and out.
I am?
A little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll try to speak a little bit louder. And in the microphone. Okay, so today is August 11th. And it is helpful for people who are not speaking or not board members keep themselves on mute until we request anyone else to speak. Because otherwise, we can't get through this. Um, today is August 11th, 2020. And we are holding a virtual continuation of a previous hearing regarding 156 Bass Road in Naham. We are the Naham zoning board of appeals. Typically, we introduce our tiles, go over the area of the advertisement. On this occasion, we are not going to do that because we've already read it. But I commence our hearing on 156 Bass Point Road. And as you may already know, um, that we are holding this hearing pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, under law 30A 17. And the governor's March 15, 2020 order, opposing strict limitations for the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town of Naham zoning board of appeals will be conducted via zoning technology. And in specific information about that is posted on the Naham website. Um, so, we shall commence. Our first order of business today is the continuation of the hearing regarding 156 Bass Point Road. And at that last hearing, Mr. Glenn Kennedy of Remade LLC had presented some plans and some documents, and the, um, the board had suggested that they revise those plans. Um, and he did so, and he submitted the revised plan to us. And I want to make sure everybody can take a look at them. Have all the members seen them?
I did not receive them.
Okay, they were sent to you by Tim Campbell in the business department. I'll send them, I'll do a copy right now, Peter.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Let me, I can look at.
Yes, I'm sure you can.
Yeah, the attachment was corrupted on that, when she sent it to me. I should have probably done it at that point.
That's okay. Um, which emails want me to send it to? I'm going to fill it from my.
Capital One. Cause that's, um, yeah, that's the one I can look at it.
Okay, can you just give it to me verbally because I'm on my home computer?
Yep, peter.barba, V A R B A, at capitalone.com.
Peter dot barba, V A R B A, at capitalone.com.
Yep.
Okay. That has been said, I sent it from my personal email account. You can have that any moment. Um, everybody, y'all, the other members? Everybody's got them?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I can share my screen with you all tonight if you want to. If you didn't come here tonight this time, I can share my screen with you, show them to you now. So let's give Peter a minute to get those plans.
Yeah, go ahead.
You got them?
Yep.
Wonderful, okay. And so where we were in the hearing on that, when we left off last time, is that Mr. Kennedy had presented his, his case. And we reviewed the plans, we asked a few questions. We also asked if there was anyone there to speak in favor or against the petition. And then we made a recommendation that Mr. Kennedy revised his plans. Um, so let's talk about the revised plans, go back our deliberation. I'm sorry, before we do that, let's see if anyone new here would like to speak in favor or in opposition of the 156 Bass Point, um, application. If there was anyone here would like to speak in favor of 156 Bass Point application? Speak now. Okay, no one in opposition? Alright, so let's do this, let's keep going with our review of the amended plans. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kennedy?
I'm, I'm good with it. I previously read the whole thing. I'm fine.
So essentially, I guess, just a question, because I just read through the parking thing. So essentially, um, there was no need for any kind of change on the parking because the use didn't change?
That's what he's saying in his presentation.
That was specifically from Wayne.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions on this matter?
No, I don't.
Okay, so we're still looking for the three, three areas of relief, is that fair to say? Mr. Kennedy, you still looking for three areas of relief?
Correct.
Okay. And those would be regarding lot coverage, regarding the right side setback, and regarding the open space.
Correct.
Okay.
And I can, if I can comment on those that's in there, but the right side setback, we kept it as is, the five feet plus. We reduced the overall coverage of the deck by about 40 square feet. And it's not really a deck anymore, it's, it's a landing and a staircase.
Okay.
So what concerns me is the dimensional sheet and the letter are still the same, that show a side setback of one foot or less. Obviously, the, the rendition that's being shown uh, in the later photos.
Which, which, which one are you looking at? Which page are you looking at?
So page.
Attachment.
Page. After, after your initial letter, the office of the building inspector, the letter dated April 16th is the same as, I think, the last package. And the dimensional requirements are the same. And I, I'm just, I'm just concerned, I don't want to, um, I want to make sure that when you move forward with your project, that the correct information is on the correct pa- paperwork.
Correct, it didn't, uh, it was not, when I submitted the plan, I did not get a, um, a denial back again from, from Wayne. I, he did not deny, it wasn't a refile, he, he, he didn't have me refile the plan and then deny it with the new dimensions on it. He, I just had, I just submitted the new plan.
So that setback. Pages eight and nine, I think, is what we need to look at.
Yeah. Yeah.
Justin, I'm sorry, I just went through, because I received a bunch of emails from you over the last week. I thought I saw these plans, but could you resend them to me as well, please?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. I thought I looked at something, but I'm not finding it, so.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is, um, do the same thing I did for Peter, Donna, because I don't, I'm at my home computer. So what is your email address?
It's my name, Donalee Leonardo.
Mm-hmm.
At AOL. I just went through even old emails, I didn't find it.
Okay. What I'm also going to do right now, in order to keep things happening, is I'm going to keep my screen with you, so you can all see what we're talking about. Okay. So this is page eight, I believe, of the package. Page here. This seems to show us this particular, these plans, they're not stamped, unfortunately. We would prefer that they be stamped. But this plan here shows the, um, 156 Bass Point Road. 6.83, I believe, is the distance there. And it's a five-foot from the lot line. Can you see that, Donna? And Peter? Everybody else?
I see it, yeah.
So that's what he's proposing now versus the deck that was there that we recommended he take off.
Okay, so basically, we went from one feet, one foot that we originally wanted to now back to the six points.
It's five feet.
Five feet.
Five feet, five plus, it's about five point, about 5.4 inches.
Justin, I'm trying to scroll up on your screen.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same width as the house, the same spacing as the house. We won't, we won't project past it, and that's allow, to allow us to get to a, a 3.6 landing, the 42-inch in width. By three feet.
Essentially, you have the same size as deck, though.
The deck is actually almost cut in half. It's the, now it's the landing, the deck, the, so by taking the staircase and pulling, and pulling the whole staircase around, we've cut this, the, what's not really a deck, it's a landing, uh, that's there. And you step out of the door to the right, you step down one, and then you go down the stairs.
Okay, because your only concern previously was the egress, and so.
Yeah, that's the only concern, yeah.
Addressed. Um, we were looking at the special permit for all three areas. And those are, and you're right, Peter, that that sheet did not change. And that is the dimensional sheet did not change. But it's the right side setback, the lot.
So we've decreased the lot coverage and increased the open space.
Do you have the new figures on the lot coverage?
That's the problem.
Say that again?
Do you have the new figures for the lot coverage?
Uh, I don't have the percentage, it was reduced by 40 square feet. I could, I could do them.
We just want to make sure that we need to still provide you with relief for that burden of, issue.
I can, I can provide the exact number. I don't, I'm not exactly sure how Wayne did the, did the calculation on it.
Okay. Alright, so the biggest issue that we had, though, was really just the right side setback, and that's been taken into care of with these revised plans. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
So we don't have a switchback set of stairs, we just have a landing and a set of stairs, is that correct?
Mr. Kennedy?
It's a, yeah, it's effectively the landing and the stairs, what, the initial, could you scroll up to, um, scroll to page four, I believe it is.
Well, here's what you had before, right here, on page, uh, seven.
Yeah.
But you have.
So there was a porch, there was a porch here. What I was going to describe was, if you go up to the, to the rendering of the, of the new porch, I can show you, so here, yeah. So the, there's a landing that comes across, and there's a step down, we need nine risers. And there's a step down, you, you, there's a full landing across the top, there's a step down to a smaller landing, and then, then the seven risers going down to the ground level. There could be, the way, the other way we looked at it was to have the landing off of the, the door, step down and have a smaller landing, narrower, but, but the full length, and then come down. That would effectively make it more of a switchback, but it's, it's one step. And what we thought was that it was, it's the same, effectively the same thing. And rather than doing it that way, you've only got about a foot from the door, rather than stepping out to that one foot, give it a little bit more space, then step down to the smaller landing, and then come down the stairs.
So there's a, it's a, but it's not a switchback stair, but there is a bend.
There is a bend, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You're coming down one, one riser from that, from that upper landing to the lower, to the second landing.
Okay. All right, any more questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Okay. Do we have any, um, any motions?
So, um, just one question, parking. What I don't understand is, if the parking in the back didn't change because there was no C of O change or anything, use change, then why is the front one, why do we need to give a variance or a special permit for the front one? You know what I'm saying? I, I just, I don't understand the logic for the.
Well, we're required to have two spaces per dwelling.
Right, and they're only going to have three. And again, wouldn't this have come to us when the site was condoized?
You would think so. And I don't know why, it's not really, he says it's not getting used, I'm not trying to do that.
Per Wayne's response, it, it was, there's no change of use or, or of occupancy to either unit. And therefore, there is no requirement for parking variance.
There is. It's right on his dimensional requirement sheet.
I know.
You went from a single family to a condominium.
Right, you went from a single family to a condominium, and now you have two units instead of one. Even though there were two houses on that space, it, you, you now have two separate owners, therefore, you now need a requirement for sport, for parking spaces, and you only have three. So that's one special permit or variance that we have to allow for. And I just, I don't understand when the division or the condoization of the house, it should have been automatically been referred to the zoning board because of the parking situation.
And, and I would have done that if that was the recommendation from the inspectional services, I would have been here last year.
No, it's not, no, it's not, it's not, it's not your, your fault, I mean, it, it should have been, it should have been referred to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Going, going back to the last discussion, was there actually another parking spot, but nobody, nobody wants to put a car in it?
Right, because it's next to a neighbor, right here.
Yeah. That's actually a parking spot.
We decided it wasn't big enough for a parking spot.
Wasn't large enough?
Well, we don't know, we don't know, we don't have the proper dimension.
It's just, it's not, it's, it's under the eight foot, from, from the, from left to the, to right. And, and in order to make it a parking space, we would have to narrow the staircase by almost a foot, which we could, which we had the space to do. But I was told by Wayne last year not to do that, and not to narrow that staircase, to leave it as is, to keep the work under the 50% rule. I was willing to change the staircase. And I was advised that I couldn't.
All right, let's stick, let's stick with what we have in front of us right now, okay? All right, let's stay focused. All right, so we have, we're looking at the three areas of relief. Is this something that we think that we can provide? Does anyone have any commentary on it? Here's the last plan, I see, we need to stay on schedule as well from 7:30. Is this something that we think we can do?
I think so. Yeah, I believe so.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion?
We do, we have to do each one separate, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so. So the first thing is the lot coverage, which is really, is really less than 43% now?
Yes.
But we don't know the exact percentage.
It's about 39.
Around 39%?
About 39 to 40%, yeah. It's only 40, it's 40 square feet, but it's only 40 square feet.
Okay. Alright, so I guess we can use that number for purposes of motion.
Well, yeah, but the existing is 42.
What exists?
According to the, according to the dimensional sheet, the existing is 42%. That's without a landing or the stairway, so there's, so how do we get below that when you add a deck and a, and a set of stairs?
Because you remember David, Peter, before that, there was another structure out there that was.
Yeah. There's a picture, he submitted a picture of it in the, um, package.
Yes, yeah.
And it was much bigger, it looked much bigger, that's for sure.
It was 12 by 7.
Well, it's much bigger than what's proposed now.
Okay, alright, I see it, I think, yeah, I think I see it, okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right, so I'll move that we, uh, that we allow for a proposed lot coverage of 39% on this, for this project. Oh, he said it might get to 40%, maybe we see 40, you know, not above. Alright, 40%.
Forty, yeah, forty.
David, why don't we do all three at once? Do all three.
Okay.
So we're proposing that the lot coverage be 40%.
40%. And the right setback, uh, right side setback is now five feet. Correct?
That'll just remain the same. That'll remain the same, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, it was going to, it was going to be one.
As a house.
Yeah, it's, existing is five feet, so it's going to remain the same.
Same as five feet.
So we won't need relief on the right, right side setback, because that's not a new nonconformity. So we only need the relief on the lot coverage then, and on the open space.
Okay.
And parking.
And parking, right?
Yeah, and so parking as well.
Okay, yeah.
Because the lot, the lot coverage, because we're really not sure exactly how much it's going to be, we don't know the math. So we'll include it, be on the same side.
Is this an instance that we can put in, in that it wouldn't exceed?
That's a good point, let's do that.
It won't exceed 40%.
So David, you want to start over?
Alright, okay.
Uh, a move that we accept the proposed lot coverage as not to exceed 40%. The proposed open space will be at 37%. And the proposed parking is for three spaces.
Okay, and are we going to make findings that those are, those three individually are not going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood? Than like any current nonconformities?
Yes, I would say that's, that's correct.
Okay. So that's your motion? Is anyone going to second it?
Yeah, I'll second it, David McCool, I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Please state your name.
What was that again?
All in favor, please state your name.
In favor, David Walsh. In favor, David McCool.
Peter and Donna?
Sorry, I had a note on you, in favor, Donna Lee Leonardo?
The same here, I was on you. In favor, Peter Barber.
Okay, in favor. Okay, so we've made that finding, and so we're going, are we going to grant a special permit? Are we going to bring a motion for that?
Okay, a move that we grant the special permit for the 156 Bass Point Road.
I'll second that. Peter Barber seconds it.
All in favor, please state your name.
In favor, David Walsh. David McCool in favor.
Peter Barber in favor.
Donna Lee Leonardo in favor.
And Jocelyn Campbell in favor. Okay, so that, um, Mr. Kennedy, that special permit has been granted, and we will be filing that decision from the next week, along with the minutes from this meeting. And, um.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on that? Anything else, are we all set? Okay, you all set?
Thank you, thank you, Donalee, for joining this meeting. Appreciate it, and thank you to the rest of you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. With all the members on, we have two more matters to take care of. So at 7:40 PM, we're going to talk about, um, the next matter is to Linda Lane. And with to Linda Lane, what we're going to do is, we are going to have a couple of motions. As you all know, this is a matter that we decided some time ago. And this was in a hearing from, the decision that we issued was in September, um, September.
5th, 2018.
2018. And that matter was appealed, and has gone to the, um, land court, Department of the trial court. And on July 1st, 2020, the land court issued a judgment. And we're here to enter that, one of the things we're going to try to enter that statement right now. And so, we're not going to be taking any, we're just going to take care of the judgment, and getting to get our motions into the record, and make sure we take care of that matter. So our decision regarding the retaining wall for that matter, the two Linda Lanes, we are going to annul that decision. And, um, and we're going to reverse the decision of the building inspector, and we're going to reverse and revoke that permit. So the first, we need a motion initially. And who'd like to bring that motion, anyone?
I'll make that motion, um, I'd like to make a motion to accept the court's, court's judgment, and to annul our decision of September 5th, 2018.
And I'll second that, David Walsh.
Peter Barber brought the motion. David Walsh, second it?
Yep.
And your decision to get your, could you read that again to me, your motion? To accept the court's judgment and to annul.
My motion is to, um, yeah, of September 15th, uh, September 5th, 2018. Regarding, I should, yeah, regarding the retaining wall.
Retaining wall, okay. Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye. David McCool in favor.
Donna Lee Leonardo, aye.
And Jocelyn Campbell in favor, aye. Okay, so then we'll need a motion for a finding, um, in regard to the stone retaining wall. And would anyone like to bring that motion?
I'll make the motion, Peter Barber making a motion that the stone wall is in violation of the Naham zoning bylaw 5.02J, and that we have to reverse the building inspector's denial of Mr. Gallagher's request for enforcement. We need to require the property owner to obtain a permit for the. We need to require the property owner to obtain a permit for the wall.
Okay.
I will second that, David Walsh.
Any discussion on the motion?
None.
None.
All in favor?
Aye, David Walsh.
Aye, Donna Lillianato.
Aye, Peter Barber.
David McCool, aye, in favor.
And Jocelyn Campbell, I am also in favor. And so at this time, for Tulanda Lane, we have, at this point, accepted the court's judgment, we've annulled our decision regarding that matter, and we have reversed the building inspector's denial of Mr. Gallagher's request for enforcement, thereby requiring the property owner to obtain a permit for that retaining wall. Right?
Is there any opportunity?
I'm sorry?
Is there opportunity for public comment?
Certainly. Like, we normally, we normally...
So I, I represent Mr. Gallagher, I'm sorry?
Mr. Sullivan, we know who you are, yes, how are you, sir?
Well, I, I, I'm curious to know how, how the decision can be made without any deliberation, and the thing I'm particularly concerned about is the, the issue of the appropriate remedy at this juncture, this seems to be, and I have had communications with Mr. Scrip, who represented, you all are some combination of past or present board members in the, in the hearing, and it seems to me, there seems to be this, this idea that there necessarily has to be a proceeding out where it goes back into the hands of, of Mr. Wilson, who originally decided the matter for a new building permit. And it seems to me that one of the outcomes in a situation where someone has built the structure without an appropriate permit is to have a hearing with evidence from both sides to determine what is the appropriate remedy in that situation. Anywhere from let them go ask for a new permit, or if it's an egregious violation and they really shouldn't have done this, to order them to take it down. And I guess I just don't understand why there isn't any consideration of, of indeed accepting evidence, accepting testimony, considering, because, because when there is an enforcement situation, this board stands in the shoes of the building inspector effectively, and accordingly, should decide what an appropriate remedy is in a given situation. There's a public permit that's already pending, and with, there are all the same violations that previously existed, are still in place, are still impacted by the permit. Mr. Wilson, who's the person who heard it beforehand, is gonna hear it again, and there just seems to be this, 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 you know, we don't have a good feeling about this, given how this is unfolding and transpiring as we speak, notwithstanding the court's judgment, so...
Okay, so, well, we, just let me just...
About, about all.
Certainly, let me just explain to you that what we are doing right now is just simply doing what the court told us to do. The court told us to make sure that by August 30th, that we enter this judgment into the record, which is what we've just done. So you're certainly welcome to have public comments, and if there's any problem with the additional, the new permit, which I, I can't imagine that there would be, considering the fact that the court's decided you're in favor, then you could certainly come back before us. Dean Scrip, counsel for the town, is here, did you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, you're doing just what Judge Roberts asked you to do, and that's sending it back to Wayne to, to determine the appropriateness of a building permit regarding that, regarding that retaining wall. And, and Mike is, Mike Sullivan, I love Mike, but he's, he's, he's been overstating his case. Judge Roberts never found any other violation other than the retaining wall. She found zero other violations, this is the only one she found, and she was very clear in sending it back to the building inspector for his review. And I've actually allotted Mike the space to provide stuff to Wayne that he thinks might be helpful in his argument regarding the denial, so to speak, of the building permit, and Wayne will have that should he need to make a decision within the next few days.
Okay. So there you have it, Mr. Sullivan, this is what we were asked to do by the court, and that's what we're doing. If there are any further problems, you can, you can just, just tell us immediately, at the best we can.
Well, thank you, I'll just, I'll respectfully disagree with the decision of Mr. Scrip, but thank you for hearing me. But if, if I just have, it's difficult to hear, one thing I just wanted to, to try to make clear for future reference, if there is an issue, if we continue to take issue with future action by the building inspector, is that, is, is the, could, is it possible that the board could make an additional finding as the chair has indicated that, that, that we may come back to this board with respect to the merits of any decision by Mr. Wilson on this new building permit application?
Of course we could, if you came back to us again with a further problem. But I don't expect that you will have any further problem. Yep, we will certainly do that.
I should point out that, Mike, there's a process, as you know, you have to file a request for enforcement and then come to the board from there. I don't think you have the ability to come right to the ZBA if you don't like Wayne's decision, I think you have to follow the process, and we can of course expedite that as quick as we can.
Yeah, I'm not sure I do either, and that's why I was hoping perhaps the board could, could, could condition its remand on a review of, of what's done. And I think it certainly would have the power to do that, to say, as the chair has indicated that, you know, it should, you know, have the, some control over the matter, given everything that's transpired, and have it come back before this board, because I, you know, what, what would be unfortunate to happen is there's, okay, the, the permit is acted upon, and notwithstanding the spirit of this discussion, that the board would be willing to you take, take a look at how, and how that went, and make sure everything was above board, you know, then you, Mr. Scrip, there, there's an objection interposed saying, well, no, you can't do that, you have to go to this other board, or do an enforcement directive, or the like.
Well, I haven't been instructed to put any further conditions on this matter right now. And so I think, let's just see how this happens, see how this works, you know, I, again, I don't expect to have any problems if you do. Come back before us, and we'll address it. Mr. Scrip returns, did you want to add anything to that?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you said it right, the procedure is there, and Mike very well knows our procedures, and he certainly will take advantage of them, there's no doubt, my man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we vote, did you guys vote on that? I may...
Not yet, I'm going to right now.
Okay.
Okay, so, we have voted on both of the the motion to accept the court's judgment and annul our decision. We also took a roll call vote on the motion for finding that the stone wall was in violation of the Mahat Zoning Bylaw 5.942J, and then we reversed the building inspector's decision, and regarding Mr. Gallagher's request for enforcement, thereby requiring the property owner to obtain permit for that stone retaining wall. And, I'm sorry, I think we both vote, we don't need any further votes on that. Okay? And I think we can move on. Mr. Scrip, is that sufficient, anything else you wanted from that?
One more time, Jason, I'm adjusting, sorry.
We've already taken a vote on the two motions that we had, was there anything else you want us to do for that?
No, not on Tulanda Lane, I think we're good to go.
I think that's good.
And Mike and I are in constant, constant touch, so we have a good communication stream, so...
Okay, good. All right, let's move on, at 7:48 now, at 7:45 we had scheduled another citizen, another prior applicant had wanted to come in and speak to us. Mr. Paul Smith, are you on the line, are you there?
I am, Jocelyn, I am.
Okay. Could you please, uh, for this evening?
Uh, so first of all, I'm having a, a real hard time hearing most of you folks, and I just didn't, I didn't hear your last comment, I heard you say, please, so I don't know what you said there.
Then please tell us how we can help you this evening.
Oh yes, okay, so, number one, if you can't hear me, please tell me, and, and I'll rephrase it. I've got a couple of issues, concerns, and a couple of comments. Number one, I don't see, I don't see it discussed in either the original decision or the amended decision, that has to do with the three-part hearing we had last fall, that ended on December 5th, 2019, but it did happen. The board voted to issue a cease and desist order on the project at 96 Willow Road. And not having anything written in the decisions, I, I, I had to go back to my tape, and fortunately, it was, it was active, and it, it recorded things. So, on 10:30 19, at about 52 minutes on my tape, it's gonna be different from someone else's, Dave Walsh made a motion, quote, that all work on the project be halted, except for draining the heating system, unquote. It was seconded by Peter Barber, and then there was a unanimous vote in favor. It was not conditional on anything else, it, it was just, that's, that's my vote, that's the motion and the vote. So the first thing I'm talking about, obviously, is a cease and desist order. Then at the continued hearing on December 5th, at two hours and 13 minutes, again on my tape, after there was a discussion on Max Casper's motion to rescind all permits, which I believe should have been done, of course, Donna Lillianato stated, quote unquote, "I don't want to be a fly in the ointment, but we voted on a cease and desist in the last hearing," a quote unquote, and Dave Walsh interjected, quote, "We never revoked that," unquote. And Madam Chair, there was some discussion going back and forth, and you added, "We can, quote, leave things as they are," and you didn't finish, and then the board talked back and forth, and proceeded to do nothing further. So the cease and desist was, was voted upon and approved on 10:30. It was discussed again on 12:05, and it was not rescinded, revoked, or anything of the like, so it was in good order. So there is a cease and desist order, Mr. Rizzo apparently knew about it, and he abided by it. He didn't do any work on the house until the bill inspector recently concocted this scheme to amend the permit and bypass the DBA and its, its orders. So I'm looking for the board here, you voted for a cease and desist because it was the right thing to do, and it seemed like you wanted to let things play out in court, and I, my request is that you confirm the cease and desist now, and we are, we are coming close to, to ahead in our court actions. So I think it's appropriate to continue that cease and desist, the, the, and I have further, but that's, I'll go on, I'll go through the rest now as well. The reason this is back in front of us is because I had sent a request for enforcement that Mr. Wilson first said, I, I didn't receive it till such and such a date, and then he, I'm sorry, he says, "I received it," and then he made a statement that was the opposite of that, he said, "I received it later." And he amended the permit. And he said, "Everything you said in your request for enforcement is correct on the date that we received it, but after the fact, let's, let's move ahead and we, we amended the permit, so it, it no longer is valid, your request for enforcement." The amending the permit at this juncture is, is totally inappropriate. The board feels on several occasions to rescind the permit, I believe it should have been done by operation of law, as soon as you voted that the project was in excess of the 50% rule. That would have been avoided, and, and because, but you guys voted that down for some reason, and Max had forecast that. He said, you know, it would be, make things much more clear, there'd be clarity to rescind it. Interestingly enough, at the December 5th hearing, several members of the board made opinion that was on the record during discussion, that we, quote unquote, "We wouldn't amend the permit at this point." Those Max Casper, and Madam Chair, you added, "Absolutely," and you agreed. So, and, and I have that at 1:056 minutes of, of the meeting. Also, I, I just found this the other day, a happenstance, but you folks have, the board has rules and regulations, it's on the, on the website. It's paragraph 2217, modifications, and I'll read it to you. "Request for modifications or changes to the language, terms, or conditions of previously granted permits shall be heard at a public hearing, unless the chair, with the approval of majority of the board, determines that such changes de minimis, and that a formal public hearing is not required. Such modifications or changes shall constitute an amendment to the original permit." I read that on its face as saying, when you're in a situation like this, if you're looking to amend a permit, this board, your board, has to hold a public hearing and discuss it. So, clearly no hearing is taking place, so the building inspector stated that everything, and, I'm sorry, the building inspector's modification or amendment doesn't stand. And if that doesn't stand, then what does stand is his initial comment that everything you said in the request for enforcement is correct. And if that's the case, then this, this permit has to be rescinded. So I, I respectfully request that, that we, we stop this skullduggery that's going on up at the bill inspector's office, that you rescind the permit. And if you're not willing to do that, the very least, confirm the cease and desist order, and let this play out in court. It's the only fair thing to do.
Okay. You have a long ongoing litigation against the town.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I can't hear you.
Okay, there's, there's a lot of background noise, because someone has, is doing something, has their, somebody on this list here is, not on you. And I think it's pretty strange that you may want to respond to this, because we have ongoing litigation, and I'm not supposed to appropriately respond to you tonight.
So, 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 I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, again, I, I hate to say this, but I, I haven't, I haven't heard a word, word you said here.
Okay.
Does, does everyone else here, the chair?
No, Jocelyn, I'm having problems hearing you as well.
Okay.
Dave McQ?
Yeah.
Mute your phone, or computer, please.
Mute.
Mute. Thank you, that should be better.
Donna Lee, that was perfect, thank you.
Donna Lee, you're a, you're a technician.
That's because I spend a lot of my time on this thing.
I hear you.
Okay, so Attorney Scrip?
Yes.
Do you feel as though you want to respond to Mrs. Scrip, where we are in the middle of litigation, the town is? I can tell you that it was never my understanding that we had an open cease and desist for her, I can tell anybody that. Because my understanding is that we had one at one time, and that was simply until the next hearing, and we came to a resolution, and we did that. And we now have a situation where my understanding is that Mr. Rizzo has come into compliance with the floodplain regulations, and it's not before us tonight, none of that is before us, is that correct, Mr. Scrip?
That's my understanding, and I've been clear with Paul, that there was a cease and desist in October, my understanding has always been that was just a bridge between one hearing, one, hearing number one and hearing number two, so to speak, or A and B, wherever you put it. What, did it make it to the final decision, it's what you call an interlocutory order in the legal terminology? It didn't make it to the end, so I didn't see it as anything that was, was standing to bring to a court. And in terms of the amended or modified permit, that's not before you tonight, if, if Paul wants to challenge that, he's certainly able to, through the avenues of which he's very, very much aware, but that, none of that's before you guys tonight.
We wouldn't be able to act on it anyway, Mr. Scrip, but we do hear you, we do hear you, and, you know, we, we tried all along, as you know, to listen to both sides of that story. We've had at least three full hearings, I think there was another one as well, and we spent hours the last night going over every possible finding, debating every single piece of it. We did our best, and here, and here we are today, and I, and I'm sorry that it wasn't, you know, didn't satisfy what your concerns were. And we certainly tried very hard, so that's what we, thank you for your public comment.
First of all, thank you, Jocelyn, for, for putting me on and hearing me tonight, so I appreciate that. But I, I take exception to with what Mr. Scrip said. The, the, I just read to you, after listening to the tape, ad nauseam. And by the way, I did get a greater respect for the issues that you folks, you, you were troubled, and you went back and forth, and were discussing. So I, it, it gave me some greater appreciation, so that's something, anyway. But you guys did vote for cease and desist originally, it was not coupled with, it was a bridge between something, or an interlocutory order, that's, that's BS. You, you, the very fact that it was discussed at the next meeting, by members of the board brought it up, hey, by the way, there's a cease and desist order out there, and then it was confirmed, we did not revoke it, and then there was a discussion about it, that means that was standing. It, it didn't make this up, this wasn't, and Mr. Scrip says it wasn't in the decision, of course it wasn't, but it did happen, we all heard it. Attorney Murphy said, "Well, it happened, yeah, and, you know, I played in the..." Attorney Murphy said, well, it happened, and, you know, I played in the tape, because, well, there it is. So it did happen, it was there. The only fair thing to do is to continue that cease and desist and let this thing play out. And by the way, we, we were missing entirely, your rules and regulations says modifications have to be at a public hearing. Now, people could read that differently, but the plain letter is as I read it to you, and you guys can look at it, you know, on your, you know, on the computer, 2217.
We're pretty aware of those, because we wrote them and we put them in there.
I got you, okay, so, modifications of previously granted permits shall be heard at a public hearing. So you're-
We're gonna have to just cut you off right there, because that matter is not before us tonight, Mr. Smith, and I'm very sorry to have to do that. We did-
You have rules though, ma'am, I mean-
We did hear you, we did hear you, and we are planning, you know, we are looking at everything all the time, but right now, we can't even talk any further, we have open litigation with the town. I want to leave that to Attorney Scrip to respond to when he-
Yeah, I hear you, Madam Chair, but, you know, the, you know, same thing with Mr. Scrip, oh, open litigation is the, is the excuse not to actually discuss it. The board members who were sitting there and hearing this know that they voted on a cease and desist. They also know that they didn't rescind it. So if they didn't, if they voted for it and they didn't rescind it, it stands. It cannot be rescinded by somebody else. You're the boss of Mr. Wilson, not vice versa. And if you choose to vote, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna remove the cease and desist, I guess you can. But I don't think you should. But you board members who are sitting there who aren't saying anything, you know you voted for that, and you know also that you didn't rescind it. I'd like to have you folks speak up on this.
All right, I'm gonna speak, Mr. Smith, I'll speak up on it. Mr. Smith, I'll speak up on it. It's, it's exactly as Mr. Scrip and Ms. Campbell said. We put a, a stop order on the project until the next hearing. It wasn't a cease and desist on the entire project, it was just a, kind of a pause so that we could get more information and allow Mr. Rizzo to either decide whether he was going to bring his house to FEMA compliance or not bring it to FEMA compliance. It wasn't a cease and desist order to stop all work forever and a day.
Thank you for answering that, Peter. I, I, I read you the, the transcript of the, of the tape. It wasn't conditional on anything else, it wasn't limited in time, and it was confirmed at the next meeting. Donna Lee and Dave Walsh both said, hey, it's out there. And he says, yeah, we haven't revoked that. And then there was a question, should we or not, and it was not done. You can characterize it any way you want, you can, you choose in the chair, chair to characterize it of exactly what Mr. Scrip says to this. But that's not what happened, and that's not what the tape says.
Okay, so I think that's, we're kind of going around in circles here, so I think that's enough.
Well, we have-
We don't, we don't have anything more we can do for you right now, Mr. Smith, I'm very sorry.
Well, so you have a cease and desist order that's outstanding. You can choose to rescind it. If you don't choose to rescind it, same thing with the permits, then it still stands. So if you don't rescind it, that cease and desist order still stands.
I would disprove you, I don't believe there's a cease and desist order out there, and I just think it's in.
So if I, if I put these, the, the, download these tapes, the, the segments that talk about this, put it in a, you know, do some work here to put it on the internet in a file, send it to you folks for your review. And it talks about that there is a permit, and it's not conditional on anything else, and that it has not been revoked. Would you say it still stands?
Attorney Scrip, do you want to answer that?
I, I wouldn't comment on anything until Paul produced something. And I'll point out, I've asked Paul for this evidence probably for over a month now, and he's not produced any of the stuff that he is claiming that is on the tapes now. So I would advise not to make any sort of finding until Paul does actually produce-
Sure, so Dan, what you said to me is, I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any order, such order. And my response to that would be, go find and look for it.
No, first of all-
As opposed to put it on me, well, no, you, or ask, or ask, you know, the chair, hey, was there an order type of thing? So, Mr. Scrip, if I put, when I produce the discussion on this, is that going to be the aha moment? Yes, there wasn't, there is an open, open cease and desist order, it still stands. And therefore, it's still in effect.
Our intention on that matter was never to do that. Our intention was, whatever you think you may have found, whatever discussion we had during deliberation, by the way, is not a part of any decision. We discussed a lot of things throughout deliberation. But what we, our intention at that time, and I think we're all in agreement, that it was to a temporary stop, pause, as Peter said earlier. And the purpose for that was to allow him to resolve, and hopefully make that decision, either provide the information requested or bring his house up into the FEMA regulations. We need those regulations, because we had ordered that he would run the set rule. We never had a permanent cease and desist order in place against that requirement. So that's, that's our intention, that's, that's what we all seem to agree upon, and that's whatever you, they think is different, I can't-
Well, I brought, I thank you for allowing me to speak. I, the, your decision, or your, your feelings on it are, as I expected, you know, Mr. Scrip counsels you to, to say certain things, and other folks. I didn't hear from Donna Lee or Dave Walsh on this, or Max Casper, I guess, is not there. But the tape doesn't lie, and it says, there is a cease and desist, they talk about it at the next meeting, they mention, they state, it wasn't revoked. Then the discussion ensues whether it should be done or not, and it was not done. I didn't make it up. The fact it didn't make it into, into the, to the decisions is telling on the board, not on me.
Well, thank you for your comment tonight.
It happened.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but I don't think we can say about this right now.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
And who seconded that motion? Dave Walsh? Any discussion on the motion, all in favor, please state your name.
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
Donna Lee Leonardo, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Jocelyn Campbell, aye. Thank you, Donna, for coming, thank you, Donna Lee.
Thank you.
Guys, bye.
Take care, thanks.
Bye.
Goodnight, David McCool.